All rise. Here ye hear ye hear, this honorable county commission meeting of Roan County, Tennessee, is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Darryl Meadows presiding. God bless the United States, the great state of Tennessee, and this honorable meeting. Please join me as we pledge our nation's flag, followed by the prayer by Commissioner Mike Heskey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow, kids. Our good Lord, it's again that we come to you, Father, here at another county commission. Lord, in that, Father, God bringing the business before you and before the good people of our county. Lord, we only pray here this evening that, Father God, what needs to be done is done, and the right thing needs to be done is done. Father, we pray for those that have a need here this evening. Most of all, Father, we pray for those that don't know you from the free pardon of sin, that it would come to know you before it's too late. Lord, and we're thankful for your son, Jesus, that he died for us and gave us life and gave us his. Give it to us more abundantly, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to this most meeting of the Roan County Commission. Commissioners have all signed in. We do have a form. First up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May ninth, 2022 meeting. We have motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Hester?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing further, sir.
Any comments or corrections? Let's vote on the minutes. The minutes are accepted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one item of executive privilege. We have with us tonight, again, back from a long absence, Ariel Smith.
Yes.
It's also good to see you. Welcome back. Welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Very glad to have Ariel back.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed. Next up is a motion to accept committee reports and correspondence. We have a motion by Ellis, second by Hester. Commissioner Ellis?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Hester?
Nothing further.
Anyone else? Mr. Berry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, and I'm not sure it's in the correspondence, but Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Firth, and I were in Gatlinburg at our conference, and we were honored to receive, we had nothing to do with it, but we received it, a clean audit for the county. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't that like nine out of 10 years, eight out of 10 years? I mean, it's, we missed it one year by technicality of having, but we were one of the few that had back to back to back. So congratulations to Mr. Woody, to the audit folks, to the payroll, whatever it is, and there it is.
There it is. It's been us. And a clean audit's hard to do, and we appreciate Mr. Woody and his leadership.
That is big.
Thank you so much.
And additionally, that's, you know, that's not, that's everybody. I mean, every department, every elected official, every employee contributes to this.
You're right.
It's huge.
Also, under number one, Mr. Woody, under the Public Utilities Board's minutes, they acknowledged the fact that we've given them the million dollars, and then said that also they were looking to get the $200,000 additional grant from the county.
Not from the county, no. I must have misread that one. Is that the, is that number one?
Number one, yes, sir. It's under the engineering report, and I could as well have overlooked, I just saw where they were getting the $200,000 grant.
They're maybe getting another $200,000, but it's not, that's not the county.
It says Roan County. That's what threw me off. Yeah. Additional $200,000, Roan County, and I was just curious as to, I just hadn't seen anything.
No.
Okay. Okay.
I haven't seen it either.
Okay, okay. And then under the budget report, our workers' comp funds, are we, are we in good shape in our, because of our self-insurance, are we in good shape there?
Doing well, workers' comp, yes.
Okay, and again, that's everybody. That's every department, that's everybody, every employee, so again, thanks to that. And in number 16, and again, the Public Utilities Board has said, they were talking about the fine. Are we still over the limits enough that we're going to get, what, that was a thousand dollars a day, wasn't it?
The article, the minutes dealt with a hundred dollars a month, so they have, it's their attorneys have written us the letters to that effect, and I've shared with the commission that you can, you all have the authority, based on councilors, to put the landfill management under their umbrella. So then they, they want to find, they have to find it themselves, so to speak.
So how do we go about doing that?
You have to pass a resolution similar to the one you passed back in 2006 or '07.
So we would just reverse the resolution setting up that board and by abolishing the board?
Well, you got two options. One, you could abolish the board and make it the Department of the County, which I think you really question that. You could basically take that same resolution, help me, Counselor, if I'm wrong, and basically add to it the management of the landfill.
Okay. So we'd expand, we'd expand their authorities?
You expand their authorities as a public.
Utilities Board.
Utilities Board.
And we can do that by resolution?
There's a public hearing or something, there's something else technically that has to be done, but it's the way you all initially set the first one up.
Yeah, and I wrote an opinion several months ago on it. I honestly don't remember exactly what it said, but it had the procedures. I can double check and get that, too.
If you would, I appreciate it. If that's how we need to get it started, then I would be, before this thing gets any farther along and we're battling each other, then that might be time.
I, you know, and just, just as a side, the, you know, we're giving them a million bucks. You know, maybe we want to just work off that payback.
Maybe that's where the $200,000 comes from. Maybe they're going to provide prepaid fines or something. You do that, Counselor, I appreciate it. Number 17, that was the ambulance audit, another great audit.
A good audit.
So we're good, we're good there as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's vote on the committee reports. Reports are accepted. Next up, nutters. Who do we have?
We have Carissa Adams, Nicole Berry, Haley Brown, Kayla Ann Brown, Natasha Cahoon, Carolyn W. Clemmons, Angela E. Isen, Clarence Glenn Gabriel, Tiffany Grisham, Catherine Hazen, Janice Henley, Catherine K. Ingram, Amy Jones, Christine S. Matthews, Christine M. McCormick, Laura Melton, Geneva R. Moore, Alicia Muller, and Janet A. Tredway.
We have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Henderson?
I just appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Gann?
Just stated, I want you to say it.
Anyone else? Let's vote on the nutters. The nutters are confirmed. Next up is hearing a delegation. This is opportunity that those in the audience have to come up and talk to the commission. We ask that you state your name and address for our records, that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, there will be a timer over here, and if there's more than one person about a particular issue, let's try to, you know, designate one or two people just to speak to that issue itself. Anyone over here? No one over here? Hey, John.
Hey. John Dennis. Before I start, I, my wife, yesterday, I said something about voter integrity. Y'all know what she means by that, to try to do things constitutionally and legally according to the laws of law. Now, we're all going to, likely have an obituary someday, and I came across an obituary that was from 1799 that I would like to read to you, and it takes roughly three to three and a half minutes. At any rate, it was written by the Virginia Gazette in 1799, 23 years ago, as of tomorrow, June 14. Red Hill, Patrick Henry's last home, has become more intimately associated with his name than any other place. Wrote the old patriot, "I live much retired amidst the multiplicity of blessings from that gracious ruler of all things, to whom I owe unceasing acknowledgements for his unvered goodness to me." After retiring from a legal occupation, amidst, in 1794, Patrick Henry purchased a real nice estate called Red Hill on the Stockton River in the county of Columbia, or Sharpton, excuse me. It was here that he spent his remaining days amidst tumbling grandchildren and changing aspects of nature. He remarked in finding Red Hill, he had found one of the garden spots of the world. Hopefully, we all did, at our retirement. Even today, the quiet restful beauty of this estate, and we were there, it's beautiful. Beautifully situated on the elevated ridge overlooking the Valley of the Stone, seems a part of pastoral England. Onto the snug story of a half-falling house Patrick Henry made, but one addition, a shed at one end of that house, and this was built not because he needed more room for his expanding family, but because he wished to hear the patter of rain on its roof. Not a roof, I guess. The woodwork inside the houses is very simple. Tall manholes and brass locks show its colonial character. Like Mount Vernon, it is a national shrine for Americans who love the founders of our republic. Hooray! Under the trees, we shaded the lawn, and in full view of the beautiful valley beneath, the mortar would often sit with his chair leaning against one of the trunks and a can of cool spring water by his side. Towards the close of the day in one summer time, he took the breeze on the lawn, around him and played with his children, to whom he is greatly attached, and whom he treated as companions and friends. He was very fond of music, and oftentimes the sweet notes of his flute or violin echoed in the evening air and broke the stillness of the valley. He renewed his interest for riding gun, and as the days gone by, saw the rural of the pastime pleasures. Aside from the enjoyment of domestic happiness, the care of estates and management of his private affairs afforded him occupation. He also assisted in the education of his younger children, not until later than the age. For many years prior to his retirement, it had been his custom to spend one hour every day in private devotion. On Sunday evenings, he was accustomed to read sermons to his family, which they all joined in sacred music while he accompanied them on the violin. Many strangers came to Red Hill to pay homage to the great patriot, to look upon his face, oh, I wish I could have done that, and listen to his words. Such visitors were always received by him with a cordiality, a simplicity of manner, which at once put them at their ease. Patrick Henry died on June 6, 1799, with the words of religious faith on his lips. Quote, "How wretched I should be at this time, at this moment," he said, "if I had not made my peace with God." With no pomp, but amid the tears of devoted family and loving neighbors, he was laid to rest in the quiet graveyard of Red Hill. Thus passed from time to eternity the immortal soul of one of America's most illustrious sons. A plain marble slab covers his grave, on which are inscribed his name, the date of his birth and death, and the words, "His fame is his best epitaph." And then the Gazette said, "Farewell, first great patriot, farewell. As long as our rivers flow or mountains stand, so long will your excellence and worth be the theme of homage and endearment. And Virginia, bearing in her mind the loss, will say to the rising generations, 'Imitate my heter- my heter- my heter- my heter.'" Hopefully, we can all do that with our lives someday. A lot of good people like Stan Moore and Stan Wasson, and a lot of good people in this county here that are serving, and we really appreciate y'all, and hopefully, hopefully things like this will be able to be said of us 223 years later.
Thank you, John. Anyone else over here? Anyone on this side?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again tonight. I'm Kenny Allred, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army, retired, grew up out on that Rockwood Mountain, and our issue tonight, I've talked with the chairman about already, is to try to get at least a limited portion of that road goped up for local and emergency traffic. I've used it for over 65 years. Disabled veterans like the ones that are here with me tonight cannot get down to that clinic in a rapid and safe manner the way they always have to be a clinic without going on that very dangerous interstate. And I know all of you have written on that thing, it's NASCAR. As well for our children. Our bus is going up that way twice a day and down. That's where I went to high school. The school's going to stay that way, but it's now having a detour all the way around. There are a lot of other reasons. People try and get there to the medicine, to the doctor, groceries, and it's got to be a shared expense, we understand. And we know that it's being worked on right now with the state, and we know that that road didn't start having problems until Interstate 40 was built. So we've got an organization called Save Our Airport Road, Save Our Airport Road. We're on Facebook, we invite you to have a look at that, and we're having a meeting on the 25th of June, that's a Saturday, at Pine Orchard Community Center. 25th of June, that's Saturday, Pine Orchard Community Center, and that will be at 3:30 PM Eastern Time. We've got three counties that are starting for that road, Cumberland, Roanoke, and Morgan. I know y'all know that, because we've got some things that are going with them jointly. So we need that for our veterans and for our children, and we really would appreciate all the work that you could do on that, and we really appreciate what you're doing so far. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allred.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allred, as you said.
Yes, sir.
There's work being done on that, and we would just ask that you don't let the newspapers or the radios or the media get information, there are people who are supplying them with information. It's not, it's not the entity that's causing the problem, it's the people who are trying to make something political out of it.
I don't understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, is if you go on media, there are people who are trying to make politicians look bad because we're not doing anything on the road.
No, I'm not going to try to make you look bad. By the same token, I'm not going to censor what our problem is, you know? And our mission is to get that right, and it's up to someone else to figure out how. You know, in the military, if we had a mission and that's it, then we didn't have the resources, we went to our right or left or went above. So it's not up to us to tell you how to do it, but we want it done.
All I'm saying to you is, by June 25th at your meeting, hopefully, we're going to have some, we're going to have some answers, at least beginning answers, we're not going to have thousands.
I appreciate that.
But all I'm saying is, is those folks just need to keep an open mind with us, and we'll work through this together.
Well, you know, what do you want me to, what are you asking very specifically? Is that term a story loser?
I'm not asking y'all to do anything, but just keep an open mind.
Oh, we will.
And don't let, don't let the Facebook gang and all that stuff dictate.
Well, ain't no Facebook gang, and I know of, I started Facebook page, Save Our Airport Road.
That's, I appreciate it.
And we've got very many people on it, and they put, that has put anything on happening now in Roan County, that censorship and up. But I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Berry, and we appreciate what you're doing. By the same token, we want to raise awareness as much as possible on this issue and get it done. And our hope is to have a ribbon cutting on the 4th of July at the barricades, at the barricades, 4th of July, ribbon cutting for at least one route, one lane of that road for emergency vehicles and local residents only. That's our hope. Anything else, sir? All right, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mr. Hester?
Yes, sir.
What's your address, please?
My personal address?
Yeah.
I'll give that to y'all, if you don't mind, please, sir.
Do you live, you commute and live near Airport Road now?
I sure do.
Okay, yeah.
And I grew up in Roan County, and we've got property there. I've got property in Roan County and Morton County, or Morton County and Cumberland County, all those. So that's an interest I have, you know, but I, you know, I'm just the guy that started the Facebook page, and there's a lot of people interested in it, and we've got a lot, you know, quite a bit of awareness on it, and our intent is to raise even more, and we're here tonight for that. Any other questions?
Mr. Reese?
Yes, sir. Good lord, I've been on that road committee quite a while.
Okay.
And I never outsaw you out there trying to get the road finished or look back like a kid.
What are you saying?
I never outsaw you at a committee.
I haven't seen you either.
Well, I've been at every one of them.
Well, yeah, I haven't seen you, and you haven't seen me. I guess that makes it even.
Well, I didn't want to argue with you, I just don't.
Well, ain't no argument, you know? Don't cut and puke something here, it's just to raise awareness issue. So if it's criticism, you can give that to me actively, if you would, please, sir.
Takes a lot of money to fix that road.
And there's a lot of money being sent to a lot of places right now, you know that. I'm not criticizing you, you know, and it's, the road's in Roan County, but, but, people from Cumberland County and Morgan County and Roan County, all those, all those communities up there use that road and have for a long, long time. I've missed the bus at Rockwood High School and had to walk it. Well, three miles is better, one up and down that road than 20 miles around the interstate and then back down to Rockwood. So, you know, that's the way we look at it, that's our issue, that's what we want. So, you know, maybe I didn't know about it because I was off in the military, I was there for 40 years.
Yeah, yeah. You could have been.
Well, maybe, okay.
Mr. Gann?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allred?
Yes, sir.
I think every 15 commissioner on this board understands your passion, and without a passion, a man don't have a dream.
You're right.
So we want to thank you and these veterans for your service.
Thank you, sir.
I can assure you, sir, that Mr. Berry is trying to do everything he can to help you.
Well, I know that. I appreciate, yeah. I can, you know, the point is, this is our mission, you know, this is ours, and we want to raise awareness, want as much as we can get, and I appreciate what you're saying, but what we do want to give is truth, and we'll try to give that to anybody else, but, you know, I don't control any of the people, I'm just a guy that started the Facebook page, and there's been a bunch of people that joined things, Save Our Airport Road, and I know y'all are trying to get us away as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Anyone else over on this side?
Good evening. My name is Tony Byer, live at 200 Highland Way in Harriman. Tonight, I have a couple subjects I want to talk to you about. First of which is, we have a new lift zone coming to Roan County, okay? It's a partnership between Comcast, Oliver Springs Historical Society, and RoanNet. They have given us approval, and this is rare, we're going to have two lift zones in the county. The first one was at Morrison Hill Christian Church, which is operational. Just last week, we got a call that they have agreed to put it in. This is significant, because they, nationwide Comcast set 1,000 lift zones. They met that number five or six months ago, but we lobbied them to please give us another one. And with the Historical Society's help and our help, Comcast has agreed to do it. It's not in yet, but it's coming. So again, I'd like to thank the cooperation from Commissioner White and the mayor about here for lobbying these people. It took five months for us to get this approved, so it's coming. Now, switching gears here a little bit, I want to talk about the TennesseeAchieves.org organization. Some of you may be familiar with that, but TennesseeAchieves.org is in like, I think, 90 of 95 counties. It started out as Knox Achieves, and now it's gone to 89 other counties. They had their first organizational meeting on Zoom last week, and I attended that organizational meeting online, and they presented some statistics. They track what they call a college going rate, that is, how many students in the state go to college. From 2019 to 2021, the last year they tracked, that going rate has decreased 9%. So for some reason, kids are not going on to college, and that includes TICAD, Harriman, Technical Schools, it's education after high school. So this year, they decided they're going to start their program earlier, they used to start it like in November or December, and contacting the students in the county. They provide a mentor for every high school student who indicates they want to go on to college. Last year, they provided mentors for 456 students, that's the 2021, 2022 school year, and that's actually still going on. So, and actually now, they're already starting 2023, 2022, 2023, because they started that last, like I said, last November, but they're starting to recruit for next year, 2022, 2023. You can go to TennesseeAchieves.org and fill out an application, and they're going to start training the people this August, so that's only what, two and a half, three months away. So I encourage everybody who's interested to become a mentor. They need about 80 mentors for the county. You'll receive about five to six students that you'll follow through, and you can actually help them meet deadlines. You help them, you don't help them fill out the forms, you tell them that the FASB form is coming due, and applications for the various colleges in the county, or actually anywhere in the state are coming due. So again, the training starts in August, again, it's TennesseeAchieves.org, and I encourage you and/or your constituents to get involved.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Linda Brumhager. I'm new to this community. I moved about four years into Cumberland County off of Smith Mountain Road. I want to talk a little bit about the Airport Road. I know that we've already had a little discussion about it, but a little different view is, when I first moved to this community in Rockwood, I noticed that it was struggling, and I thought what a great opportunity to be involved in a community that I could put my efforts in and give my business to. Now, Airport Road is not a faster way to get to Rockwood, but it is more gas efficient. You can go all the way to Harriman and then five, five miles back into downtown Rockwood, or you go all the way to Westall and then back into Rockwood. Either way, as we know, we have gas money that's involved. It's a lot easier just to go to Harriman and spend your money in Harriman. Now, I know that doesn't make any difference to Roan County, because you get our tax money whether we spend it in Rockwood or we spend it in Harriman, but the issue is, is the businesses in Rockwood need our community, and there's a lot of families up on 299 that take all of our business down to Rockwood. Rockwood's on the edge. It can do really well, but when you take our resources and send them to another town, that's going to cause some issues, and I really want to see Rockwood survive. We have some great restaurants down there, some great new businesses, but they're all on the edge, and they don't need our money going elsewhere than community, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
I assume we recognize our Roan County youth leadership?
Absolutely.
That are here tonight, if they'll stand up, we'll recognize you, you're a great job.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to, let's see, where are we at? The county attorney's report, Ms. Flackney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a brief report. We have
We have Chancery Court tomorrow, we have several of our property maintenance cases set and we have recently been sued over a roadway. A Mr. Robert Van Norman of Ten Mile owns some property in Bayside Farm Subdivision. There is an undeveloped portion of Bayside Drive that runs between two of his lots. He has sued claiming that he's exercised control over them over many years and should have title to them. I am vigorously defending the lawsuit. I recommend that we do that simply because of the legal principles involved. I have advised his attorney that he may want to see if the county commission will abandon that portion of the roadway and I advise his attorney of the procedure to do that. With that, Mr. Chairman, is my report and if you have any more questions, if anybody has any.
So have we viewed this, that case before? Have we undertaken that Bayside Road before?
This was just filed about two, three weeks ago.
Okay, and what was his name again?
His name is Robert Van Norman and basically he's got two lots at the end of the subdivision, two lake lots across the street from each other and from what I can tell, Bayside is developed up to, up to his two lots, but not past his two lots.
And it's on Bayside Drive?
Bayside Drive. He's at 185 Bayside Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lefebvre, are there any homes on these lots that he owns now?
I don't know, I haven't looked into it that far.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for Mr. Lefebvre? Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Executive, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things right quick. Annually, we put out the annual debt service report that reflects the debt of the county, where we're, where we stand and as our multi-year budgets go out to year 2040 something, so that should be on our website, we'll double check tomorrow. We've been going over it the last week or so, so you can look and the public can look, it's the annual debt report, June 6, 2022, what we have it dated. Just a couple comments about the budget. The Budget Committee finished the last deliberation of the 2023 budget on Friday, so what is scheduled now going forward, we'd like to try to get our budgets adopted by June 30th at the request of the Compteur's Office. So on Tuesday, June the 28th, we have, the Budget Committee hosts a public hearing by statute. After the public hearing on the budget is closed, immediately we go into a Budget Committee meeting in case there's any final changes to the budget. After the Budget Committee meeting, if there's no changes, you know, we should have some of this wrapped up, you know, really quick, we will have a county commission workshop and we've also called a special call meeting of the county commission for the 2023 budget. You should have received today the detailed copy of the 2023 proposed budget, should have come in your Google Drive and we'll probably, we may even send it out again because we have some more documents we need to send out. We'll send out the final Budget Committee minutes of June the 10th, which, which was last Friday. With that, we will, we are updating the appropriations resolution, which is the resolution that you vote on to basically adopt the budget. The, the details you see, the appropriation resolution kind of references the details, it is at a 50,000-foot level, but it's the appropriation resolution you vote on and then you vote on the tax resolution. So those two documents will be also sent along with the minutes. We have two resolutions that are budget-related that came through, one came through the Art Committee last week and the other one came through the Budget Committee. So those two resolutions will also be filed and then there'll be filed a third resolution that deals with a procurement item that is a contract for Eagle View so we can have a flyover on our GIS and property appraisal. So that's been recommended by the Budget Committee. The other thing that we may take up at the Budget Committee meeting earlier that day is just any final revision on the 2020 budget. As you are reviewing these documents, please give us a call, shoot us an email if you have any questions. We'll try to get those and if you send them to us, we will, we'll try to answer those questions back and when we do, we'll copy the other members of the commission. So, you know, a lot of people, if one commissioner has a question, you know, more, more than one does, so we'll try to field all those questions either by phone or if you email us, we'll email the entire group. The accounting department, budget department, they've done a good job getting our budget together. As we've talked about in Budget Committee, we're probably in the strongest financial position we've ever been in, but we also recognize the headwinds in front of us as we're having high inflation, potentially going into a recession and we're trying to position the financials to kind of weather this storm for the next couple of years. So I'd like to say thank you, Budget Committee, for the time you served this, this last term in, in the last number of years. And for me, I guess the next Budget Committee meeting hopefully will be my last.
Mr. Woody, if you don't care to give everyone the time of the public hearing on the 28th?
Six, six o'clock.
And the other meetings follow thereafter, correct?
They follow thereafter, yes.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Woody?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, you, you mentioned our website and I, I continue to have numerous people ask me about our website. Are we up to date on our website?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I mean, they just keep saying our meetings aren't, our meetings aren't posted, this isn't posted.
There is a, Kenny's here maybe, but there is a, somebody's mirror image of one of our websites or I think our website that's been, some people go to the wrong site and they think it's us. And we've had that experience before, they'll call us and say, hey, we can't find it on there and we're saying, you've gone to the wrong site. And I know what that was.
There's a Roan County in West Virginia.
Yeah, there's also Roan.
It's RoanCountyTN.gov.
And what?
RoanCountyTN.gov.
Is our site.
So then I, this newspaper man, I, I would ask that you will help us get the proper RoanCountyTN.gov for our website because, because you're catching a lot of heat because you're making, you know, our meetings, we can solve a lot of problems if we get our website. Thank you, appreciate you.
That's a good point, I had that pointed out to me as well, but there, that, those two sites look practically identical. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While we're on that note, this is just a matter of preference or something maybe that I would like to see is a one-page, a one-pager of the head departments, their work hours, their convenience centers, their work hours, and still having to drill down into all of the fields and the different departments and still trying to find out. I looked the other day and I know, I'm no country boy, but I looked the other day for 30 minutes to try to figure out what, what hours are convenience center or something. If we could just get a simple cheat sheet and a drop-down box to say, these are the hours, or the county executive, these are the hours of the courts in the courthouse, these are the hours of the convenience centers and, and some numbers that I think that would be helpful to everyone.
It, it's, it is challenging to manage a website when you don't have actually assigned staff to manage websites.
I understand.
And it's always changing and it's kind of like, we try to upload these, but sometimes we have difficulties in doing that, but we'll see what we can do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Next up is special orders. Special order number one is confirmation of reappointment of the following individuals to the Roan County Board of Public Utilities. We have Stan Malone, Jeff Parkinson, and Alan Deetz. These new terms will expire June 30th, 2025. We have a motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Berry?
Yes, uh, again, as all of our boards and committees, these, these guys do a great job. Stan Malone, certainly, we started that, he's been chairman now since 2009. So, uh, these other folks, you can see by, by their minutes, the, the work they're doing, ignore the fact that they're trying to come after us, but, but they're good, they're good folks that do a good job. I would recommend highly that we, that we reappoint them.
Thanks, Commissioner Berry, Commissioner Gann?
Nothing.
Anyone else? Let's vote on this reappointment. They are reappointed. Next is confirmation of appointment of Freddie Dutton to the Roan County Agricultural Extension Committee, keeping passing of Donnie Evans. The new term will expire December 31st, 2024. We have a motion by Commissioner Hooks, second by Commissioner White. Mr. Hooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we are correctly missing Donnie Evans and all the things that he did for our county, our county fair department, our car department, volunteer car departments, 911. Sadly, we miss him, but I know he's in a better place. Mr. Freddie Dutton is the son of Mr. Mrs. June Dutton, Dutton's Groceries out on the east end of the county, who has a farm and it's my honor to recommend him to fulfill the term of Donnie Evans.
Thank you, Commissioner Hooks. Commissioner White?
Nothing to ask, sir.
Anyone else? Let's vote on the confirmation. He is confirmed, thank you. Next is confirmation of appointment of Jody Fraley to the Roan County Library Board as a Harriman representative. The new term will expire June 30th, 2025. Motion by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Berry. Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Berry?
Once again, Jody Fraley's done a great job and she's, she's, I think she's serving on this, is she here tonight? She served on the library board for, for, for a number of years. Another great example of Roan County stepping up and volunteering their services, highly recommend.
And let's vote on Jody Fraley. He is confirmed. Next is on resolutions, appears there are none and there are, is no new business now under, we, now it takes us to new business, which first item is resolution 6-22-01, which is a resolution authorizing the abandonment of all interest of a portion of Airport Road. I would like to pull this because Mr. or Commissioner Berry, then Superintendent Person informed me that there is a meeting set up by Senator Jaeger between the State Department of Transportation and Roan County Highway Department. Is it this week or following week?
Yeah, let's, let's clarify, we have a new transportation commissioner in the state, so, so it would be Senator Jaeger trying to get us a, an appointment with them. We haven't, we haven't asked the state to be involved yet, but this week there's going to, there's going to be some conversations. Hopefully we will have, we will have some more information by the 25th. Also, the, uh, you know, we're going to reach out to some, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we, we didn't have a problem with that road until, until the interstate was built and that's all we've had is constant problems, so, so we're going to try to see if we can get some interest. Hopefully by the 25th, we will have some information. I would hate to see us vote tonight to abandon that thing because there are still lots of things going on and lots of information to be had. Representative Superintendent Person is, is working on a, on an estimate from, from a, an engineering firm. They're hard to get because most engineering firms have dealt with that, with that road over the years and they, and they know the situation we're in. We're, we're certainly going to do everything we can to try to get those folks some kind of relief.
Absolutely, I agree, thank you, you're exactly right.
And I'm not sure how many of them have actually been up there to, to look at that road. There's some spots, one lane won't get, I mean, it's, it's past, it's past the center line, so, so we've, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do.
Does anyone have any objections to this being pulled? Anyone? Okay. That resolution is pulled, that takes us to resolution 6-22-02, a resolution authorizing the abandonment of all interest in a portion of right-of-way on Tacoma Road in Philadelphia. We have a motion by Commissioner, is this on this?
It is.
Okay, that's what, okay, Commissioner Hester makes a motion. Commissioner Gann has a second, Commissioner Hester.
Just one thing on here, two things, one, and somebody just educated me for one, so I live in 7th District, correct, south of the river. Why are we still using old terminology, 4th Civil District? Is there a way that we can get away from that in future government?
How you been?
I mean, because, you know, I get confused easy, but 4 and 7 are two different numbers. What, what's the step to, to consolidate that into one? Anybody answer that, Mr. Woody?
Mr. Woody can't answer that.
So why, why don't we also amend this?
Charles Holloway, is he in the room?
No, sir.
All right, I would love to see that restructured, reorganized, but also on this resolution, I believe we said this was in Philadelphia, then it says whereas at the end of there, the right-of-way of Tacoma Road in Rockwood, so probably just need to change the terminology of that. Unless there's another Tacoma Road in Rockwood.
Not to my knowledge.
That's a vote.
Mr. Lefebvre, does this need to be amended?
Yes, you would need to make a motion to amend it and then vote on that.
So good.
Okay, so you're going to amend it to strike the right of, portion of right-of-way in Rockwood to make it read Philadelphia?
Philadelphia.
And also the district from what way?
That may be something totally different.
Yeah, I think that, that may be something.
Yeah, if you go on the state website, they, they break it down into civil districts and the purpose of voting, it's, it's two separate things, it's a state-level voting.
So that may be correct.
It's my understanding for real estate purposes, it's the 4th Civil District.
Okay.
But for voting in, it's separate.
Yeah.
Different government, I suspect.
Probably, I don't, I don't know the rationale.
Good thing the federal government doesn't give us a code.
They probably do, it's called census box.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a...
Double-digit without numeric reference, so.
So we have an amendment offered by Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Gann, will you accept that in your second?
I will.
Can we vote on this all at one time, Greg?
Got to vote on the amendment.
Let's vote on the amendment.
Just one second, sorry.
You'll do that by roll call?
I'm almost there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do you want me to hit the amend button there?
No, dear, I've already got it typed up, I just need the button so we're faster. Sorry. Hold on just a second. Okay, it's on the amendment now, so you can make...
So now we're going to vote on the amendment, correct?
Yeah, if you'll add the motion by Hester.
Hester began.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, this is on the amendment, on the, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's voted on the amendment. Amendment passes, now that takes us to the resolution as amended, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we're voting on the resolution as amended by Commissioners Hester and Gann, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a vote on the resolution. Resolution passes.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Since, and I agree oh hardly with Commissioner Hester in what he brought that up, Gann, is there a way that you can give us sort of a, an opinion next month on, well, if, if there's anything we can do to go from different civil districts to get them back to the same city of the 5th Civil and the 1st District?
Well, I'll look into it, but I think that civil districts are something different than voting districts, so, but I'll, I'll, I'll thank you some.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, resolution 6-22-03, a resolution authorizing the acceptance... a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an additional .12 miles, which is 645 feet of Casey Road. We have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, it's something we need to support.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I agree with what Commissioner Henderson said. It needs to be done.
Anyone else? There being a vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-04, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of Joe Road as a county-maintained road. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, this needs to be done. The Road Committee didn't pass it. It should already been on there, and someday or another, got left out of the list.
Commissioner Henderson.
None further.
Commissioner Hester.
So, all these roads that were either vacating or approving have all went through the Road Committee. I'm telling you. It's unanimous vote.
Yes.
And they do meet the 50-foot standard right-of-way and everything now, or?
No, they think the 50-foot, I don't think. Glenn, has she been working on it since you came back?
No, some of these roads do not have the standard 50-foot right-of-way. Some of these roads were built and dedicated years ago. That, this one in particular, was when Midtown became a city. They took over the roads in Midtown. Well, when county took back over that part down in there, we had to put the roads back on the county road list. This one didn't come back on it. So, that's why we have Joe Road.
Anything else, Commissioner Hester? Anyone else? Let's vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Next, Resolution 6-22-05, a resolution authorizing the abandonment of all interest in a portion of right-of-way on Lefebvre Drive in Rockwood. We have a motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Berry?
Yes, Glenn?
Yeah.
When I drove out to Lefebvre Drive, is it just an old abandoned where it should go straight, but the road turns to, goes up to the right? Exactly. What Lefebvre Drive was dedicated as a straight road, I'll put it there. It was built with an S-turn in it right there, and it goes back to the train place back there on the back.
So, the house is on that curve. Is that Lefebvre Drive?
Yes, sir.
So, they live on Lefebvre Drive. We're banning the part that never was finished?
Never was finished.
That's probably the Lefebvre family.
Hey, Mr. Berry, do we need checks if they have a performance and paint and bar?
Let that be over here. Okay, thank you, Glenn.
What, no.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. It's voted on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-06, a resolution authorizing the abandonment of a portion of Old Elberton Road in a harem. We have a motion by Commissioner Gann, second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Gann?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Coper and Mr. Lefebvre and the other commissioners who have supported the abandonment of this road. This road is in Little Emery area. It's the old Elton Road. It used to run from Emery to Elton. There is currently five residents on this road on the west end of it. Comming Utility District has a pumping station on there. There's already a gate right past the pumping station, Sportsman's Club or someone else. The problem is, it's about two years ago, and this is really hard being involved in government when you really want to help somebody. And I'm sure every commissioner here has had to face that. About two years ago, a young man came to the road committee, and he requested for that road to be closed. He just moved here, moved to the county, had a nice little home up on the hill. But the problem was, he has little children. And the problem is, is that road is nothing but just a place for drugs and alcohol. And it's really bad. The county goes out there every once in a while, and they pick up mattresses and toilets and everything. And it can be a beautiful place. It really can. It's on the Little Emery River, and it's very pretty. The other problem is, is Comming Utility District workers go up there to the pumping station, and people will, they stay there. They don't just camp there. They stay there for a month at a time. And they hinder the folks that's working on the pumping station. You know, these guys are just trying to do their job. But the problem is, is the families in that area. Unfortunately, we do have a drug problem, and it ends up being right there. There has been women that has knocked on their door at 2:00 in the morning and asking them if they can get them home because they run off and leave them, you know? And they go out there, and there's needles on the ground and everything else. And we've been trying for two years. So, I ask the commissioners tonight to support the abandonment of this road. We really need to get it done. I know that our cities and our towns are in problems, but us in our rural areas, we have our own problems, and we need to help. And I need to help tonight from you guys to help abandon this road so that we don't have that problem. And I know we'll have it somewhere else. But when we get it somewhere else, we'll fight somewhere else. That's what we got to do. But tonight, I ask you, please, support the abandonment of this road.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I have nothing, Dan. Commissioner Hucks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. This has been before the Road Committee, and the Road Committee unanimously supports this as a proposal. I'll show the tenant in Glenn Coper's office.
Anyone else? Commissioner Berry?
Just, again, all of those residents, five or six residents, are in favor of this, right?
There is no residence passed where the gate were gone.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gann, so this will be gated?
There will be a gate put up. The Comming Utility District will have access to the gate so that they can get to the pickup stations and do their work. It isn't being controlled by them, since it's their business.
Very good. Anyone else? Let's vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-07, a resolution to adjust the revenue and expenditures in the General Fund 101, which shares function 54110 for the 2022 AAA Tennessee Community Grant. We have a motion by Commissioner Hucks, taken by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Hucks?
This has been before the Board of Committee, and it's accepted the grant money in our yield for county debt to fund the grant.
So, this is just a grant which we have to, the commission has to accept it, so we're just receiving money and then expending it out through our sheriff's department on the particulars of the grant. $3,300.
Commissioner Hucks, anything else? Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further.
Anyone else? Let's vote on the grant. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-08, a resolution amending special funds, or special revenue funds, 116, solid waste sanitation, 118, ambulance, 121, fire and animal, 128, recycling and landfill, and 131 highway reflecting changes in the revenue and expenditure estimates for the 2021 through 2022 fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Hucks. Commissioner Hester?
No comment.
Commissioner Hucks?
This has been before the Board of Committee. It's a Board of Committee cleanup in Comming County debt to continue this method.
Just a couple items. If you look at these as our special revenue funds, we are making some slight changes to the expenditures. We're making some major changes positive to the revenue. Revenue's doing exceptionally well on these five funds. So, in attached to the resolution, you can see are the details of where these particular revenues and expenditures are. All of them are adding money to the undesignated fund balance in these accounts.
Commissioner Hucks, anything else? Commissioner Berry?
Mr. Woody, in 116, under the solid waste, in 128, those are significant. I mean, is there something that we've done that's differently that's increased the revenues that drastically?
In 116, there is. The 116 is substantial increase in revenue, and that is the local option, sales tax. And part of that is changes in the way the state is recognizing our deliveries in our homes. So, the way the sales tax, where half of all sales tax goes to education, the local option, the other half goes to the SITUS area. If the SITUS area is in Kingston, it goes to Kingston. Hammond, it goes to Hammond. If it's in the rural part of the county, it goes to our rural services. So, Fund 116, for instance, is only paid by the convenience centers for people outside of the cities. But it's because the way that sales tax is being tracked now on so many home deliveries. And you flip that with some of the, quite frankly, dollar stores that have gone into our rural part of the county, our sales taxes are. So, it's been very positive. That's the biggest part of 116. And 121 is that, you know, we have some revenue there also. And some of this is property tax, too, so.
128?
128. Well, 128, if you look at it, it's the seller recycle materials.
I'm saying it's.
Tony's back there in the back, but, you know, it's the cardboard, it's the plastic and the metal. So, we're up $166,000 more than we anticipated. So, good to have those revenues up.
Yes, it is. That's a good note. Good job, Tony. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Berry?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-09, a resolution amending the General Fund 101 reflecting changes in the revenue and expenditure estimates for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Hucks. Commissioner Hester?
No comment.
Commissioner Hucks?
This before the Board of Committee, the Board of Committee recommends the adoption if we have any public explanation on you.
It's another great amendment to make as we're reflecting revenue up half a million dollars. Some expenditures up 100,000. So, we're adding 420,000 to the so-called undesignated fund balance for any day fund. You'll see it scattered out from property tax, hotel motel tax. One big item, of course, is the building permits we discussed before. We recognize some contract prisoner boards with the state of Tennessee, and that's up. We had more state prisoners than we anticipated. And that's the biggest part of your revenue right there, the 532,000. The expenditures, as you can see, they're kind of scattered all over the place. Health insurance, dental insurance, anywhere from unemployment to gasoline. It's just kind of, and then the trustee commission. Any fund that receives revenue, there's a trustee commission assigned to that. And the general fund is because the revenue is increasing the cost of trustee commission, 30,000. And we turn around that and put it in the revenue side of the general fund also. It's kind of odd in this case, but that's the way the Comfor's Office tracks. All the funds that receive money, there's a fee charged that comes and basically pays for the trustee's office, the county in purchasing. And that's the bulk of that resolution.
Yeah, they're coming. Let's vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution 6-22-10, a resolution amending the General Parkers School Fund 141 reflecting the changes in revenue and expenditure estimates for the 2021 through 2022 fiscal year. By Hester, second, by Commissioner Hucks. Commissioner Hester?
You know, I love looking at these spreadsheets. Sometimes I look, I guess I overlook. Is there anybody here from the school board?
Eric.
Eric. One, I've always looked at the maintenance. Eric on that. So, we've increased our maintenance budget somewhat there. But still, I don't think it's near enough for the $330 million worth of assets that the school board owns to maintain our schools. We're still dealing with $400,000 worth of maintenance of effort for $330 million worth of property.
There's no maintenance of effort in increase in this budget. We're transferring 448,000 of indirect costs from federal funds, and we let that hit fund balance because we're not going to claim it. It's just a realignment with the School Federal Projects Fund. And you'll see in the next coming budget for next year, we are transferring $5 million to, for maintenance of our buildings.
Oh, okay.
So, that'll be taken care of in next year's budget.
So, there'll be a lot of new roofs on schools?
We're using extra funds. We've got probably 10 million plus in extra funds that we're using to roofs, and a lot of improvements going on. We're waiting because everybody's making these improvements, so.
So, just a clarification. We have capital maintenance, and that's what the schools have really been focusing on. So, that's going to be in a total separate fund than the operational maintenance.
Yeah, and I understand the capital project versus, you know. Is there a dollar value limited on a capital project? I mean, do you say, okay, it's a million dollars. That's capital project.
Oh, oh.
A new roof is 500,000.
Yeah, so, basically, and you're looking at ticket items of probably at least 50 to 100,000 that would be classified as capital. And then you can group some of those together. But what you're looking at is roofs, HVAC systems, probably paving, security. And that's the bulk of the capital maintenance that's going to be in the education capital improvement fund as opposed to the operational fund.
And I didn't see any of it. We got privileged information, I guess. We're going to increase our SROs within school systems.
That's for next year's budget.
That next year budget.
That's a request. That's the school board adjusts the budget when they approve.
And six additional schools.
Five.
Five additional school resource officers.
I think you'll see that recommended in the budget.
Yeah.
The coming budget.
And I'm fine with it, guys. I really am. But, Mr. Hartman, I know you're here and the only one from the school board here. But let me, you know, I digest a lot of stuff. I intake a lot of the news and stuff. Is there a school in Rome County now that I can walk into at 11 o'clock, unimpeded?
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask the director.
Well, we've got a meeting on the 28th or the 27th. I think the school liaison meeting. I'd be curious that. I mean, I know.
11 at 9:00? I mean, we got.
No, during the day. I mean, any hour that there's school going on, is there an open door that I could go into?
We should have all secure entrances, and what our policy is to have the school locked in. Like Rome County Highway, you have to press a button Like Roan County, how you have to press a button to get in the front door. So, we should have all the schools secure during the day.
Okay, thank you, sir.
From what I understand.
Appreciate that. And I did notice a lot of increases in salaries. Instead of the director of schools, $15,360 increase in salary.
That's a lien payout for the outgoing director, so we're required to pay that. So, it's a accrued vacation.
So, what is our salary payment for the director of schools?
Well, for this past year is 128.
With a $15,000 bonus?
That's in 188 line in that same category, and so it's a separate line. The $15,000 adjustment is the accrued vacation payout.
All right, thank you, sir. Nothing falls.
Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Harmon?
Yes?
For capital and for maintenance, how much is set aside each year for each one?
Well.
From the capital maintenance and.
We have pennies now going into the maintenance projects, some roof fund. I don't have that in front of me because we're not discussing it with this budget minimum, but we have, with Mr. Woody's guidance and help through the years, moving pennies over, adding a roof fund, a maintenance fund. We used to transfer half a million dollars over each year, but we've built those funds up where we can really do some maintenance on the building.
But like, your maintaining maintenance, y'all usually set aside $3 million a year. Typically, what's that around now?
It's about a million, million-two in tax revenues that come in from the maintenance fund, about 800,000 for the roof fund each year.
So, that's right around $2 million.
Approximately.
So, how much of that goes to salary zero? So, that's strictly just maintenance, it's all that. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just to add to that, just think, four or five years ago, it was zero.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Four or five years ago, we weren't really funding maintenance, capital maintenance at all. We've been able to do that as some of our debt is paid off. We've been going from borrowing money to do it every five, 10, 15 years, to basically taking our local revenue and maintaining our own facilities instead of tax, instead of somebody out of another part of the United States.
My bus is out of that fund.
Right.
With the tax rate that everybody's.
Yes. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you. Eric, we're talking about roofs and maintenance. How do we decide which school gets a new roof, which school gets X number of dollars of maintenance?
It's going to need.
I mean, we've got 17, I thought about 17 buildings, right? So, are we long-range planning for, I guess my point is, do we have a date with this school like we do a bus, at five years or 10 years? Do we have a date that we're not going to put any more capital money into a building and look at some alternative?
Well, we're currently doing that on some of the high schools that we are planning to close at some point when we build a new high school, so we're trying not to invest these maintenance money in those schools, but we still have to have kids in them and maintain them, but, I mean, there's not.
So, we do have a long-range plan of looking at?
Yeah, some of these, the items that's identified in next year's budget will go out two, three years, because there's no way we can do all those projects in one year. So, there's a complete list, plus the ESSR funding. I mean, we were fortunate to be able to use that, those funds for capital maintenance and improvements of the buildings.
Okay. The other thing is, are we getting, are we getting any more information on the, what is it, TISA?
We're pulling the information we have, and we'll share that on the 30th with you all.
And that, we're not sure yet how that alleviates, it's 24, I think, and it's not 23 that we.
23, 24.
So, we'll know then how we come out with the.
It's about a $4, $5 million increase.
Increase bottom line?
State funding, yes.
Because the graph that they show you, one will show you five years out, less money than we gave, 10 years out, we're more money than we gave, maybe talk, you guys got to be reading that so good. The other thing, I guess, I heard a liaison, school liaison committee meeting?
Yes, there is.
There is one?
Scheduled. What's that date? June 30th. June 30th.
June 30? Probably not on our website.
It actually went out. It was on the file.
That's just what the liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't realize we had, I didn't, okay, that's fine.
Let me add to this budget amendment. There was a comment, salaries are increased, there's salary decreases and increases that net to zero, so we just wanted to point that out.
So, bottom line is zero on salaries?
Zero effect, we're adding 448,000 to fund balance, zero, we're moving money around, it's a cleanup, so.
So, under.
No increase in expenditure.
Under the new TISA plan, do they allocate more money for teachers with, we don't know yet, masters?
I don't know.
EDS?
I don't know the breakdown of it. We know the total finding and some presentations, so.
So, how much do we spend off here? I know what that is. Do you know what percentage we spend now for people with those higher degrees in Roan County?
I don't have it.
Because at one time, we had a pretty good percentage of people with those degrees.
Most people get a higher degree, yes, throughout their career.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see what that number is if you have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hester?
Eric, I was just reading the resolution, it says, we're in, have changes due to changes in salary and benefits, so that's why they keep me in, making a good look down through the salary list, so.
Yeah, it all adds up to salary and benefits, that net to zero effect on expenditure.
But overall budget nets to 59 million, almost 60 million.
Yeah, and we're not increasing it with this budget.
Doesn't bother.
Anyone else? It's about on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution six twenty-two dash eleven, a resolution amending the central cafeteria fund 143 reflecting changes in revenue and expenditure estimates for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Hester, commissioned, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Hester?
No comment.
Commissioner Wilson?
It's just a cleanup.
Anyone else? It's about on the resolution. Resolution passes. Resolution six dash twenty-two dash twelve, a resolution amending the school transportation fund 144 reflecting changes in revenue expenditure estimates for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Wilson?
Another cleanup.
Commissioner Hester?
No comment.
Anyone else? Resolution passes. Takes us to our last resolution, which is six twenty-two dash thirteen, a resolution approving the ARC project number 18, allocating TDEC and ARC match funds to municipalities for use in their respective utilities, to the rural utilities, and to the county wastewater, county-owned wastewater utility. We have a motion by Commissioner Hux, seconded by Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Hux?
This has been before the ARC committee about twice, I think. We've met with the public utilities either three or four times, and it's been the budget committee about twice, too, and we were trying to refine all the numbers. I guess last month, we passed Resolution 06 that incorporated the 1.3 million of the county ARC funds as match money for the 5.3 TDEC, subject to each respective utility, kicking in a percentage also. So, all of your cities received money that they had to match, we are putting money in that we are matching and asking them to match, and then the rural utilities are also putting their match money in. I had calculated at one time what the total investment in utilities were, and it seemed like it was near, it was near 16 to 20 million dollars, and you're seeing 8 million right here being appropriated. So, hopefully, this will improve our water systems and sewer systems in the rural part of the county, and also assist the ones with inside our cities. There may be more resolutions similar to this that are adopted in the next several months, as the numbers still somewhat change periodically, but hopefully, this is a step in the right direction for most all of our utilities. It's a long time to get here, but we're probably still one of the first ones out the gate in some cases.
Commissioner Hux, anything else? And then Commissioner Hester?
Nothing.
Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, this is probably one of the best cooperative projects that has been undertaken in Roan County in many, many years.
Yes, sir.
If you remember, when we started this allocation of money, we said we wanted not to spend our money, we wanted to invest our money, and I think this resolution is a good example of that investment. There are going to be sewer projects going to areas that would probably not have sewer in the next 15 years because of our utilities not being able to fund them, and there'll be going to areas that will have growth. I think you're seeing growth on Pine Ridge Road because of a grant we did. There's growth down at the Rockwood Marine because of a grant we did. So, it's all good, and we're due our second payment any day of our remaining 5 million. They said we were about two weeks late. I think we got our first one on May 21st last year, so we should be receiving that second half of that 5 million dollars at any time, so this is a good resolution. I think it speaks well for this commission, speaks well for the utilities, the county mayors, city mayors, everybody that got on board on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said. Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Woody, the $175,000 ARP money fund in Kingston for the land and the grant for the ramps, do we know when that's going to be on?
So, that's going to be one of the resolutions that is with the budget.
It's going to be on next month?
No, it's going to be on the 28th, when we have our budget committee public hearing workshop. We're going to have a budget resolution, but we have two or three other resolutions that are budget-related, and that's one of.
Awesome, thank you.
We're going to try to incorporate it into the next year's budget that way.
Anything else, Commissioner Barrett? And it brings us to the end of our meeting. One more reminder of the meeting of the Save Our Airport Road Supporters, June 25th, 3:00 Eastern.
Yes, sir.
At Pine Orchard Mutual Center. You've got to talk, never mind. Let's vote. Let's vote on the resolution. Y'all got to talk.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have motioned.
Thank you, thank you.
All those papers, they are?
Aye.
See you next time.